I'm sure you ever seen a hearse pulling a U-Haul with a bunch of money in it? And you ever seen somebody throw money in the casket when you're being driven? You can't take it with you.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the October sixth workshop. Let's agree to the city council. Mayor PJ Collins decided over the workshop. First, I'd like to call on our city clerk for a roll call.
Mayor Conley.
Here.
Mayor President Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Foreman.
Here.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Scully.
Here.
And Councilmember Robinson has let us know that she will not be joining us this evening.
Willis.
Willis.
Oh, excuse me. My bad. I gotta hit myself.
I'm like, okay.
Okay, Councilmember Robinson is here.
Wait a second.
I like to think I'm hard to miss.
Sorry for the delay. And Councilmember Willis has let us know that she will not be joining us this evening. Mayor Conley, have a question.
All right, thank you very much. I'll move on to your approval of the agenda. Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'd ask that a closed session motion be added to the workshop to be read right before adjournment.
I'll just add back to the, uh, to the next.
All right, motion made by... Motion made by the present Mr. Robinson, so the present Mr. Scully. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passed, it's fine.
All right, let's roll. We're not doing it.
Mr. Mayor, I've been wondering if this is update from discussion, potential changes to the standards for the bar 2022 and microbrewery uses. Now I call forward our chief planner, Shante Gugby, for the presentation.
I have some handouts. We have some slides. Hopefully, that's enough to go around. We did talk about bar 2022 at your October meeting, and we'll pick that up as an end. So now we're just gonna go through the microbrewery piece.
Thank you.
Oops, I think I already got, I already got my little... So...
Thank you, sir.
The background for the microbreweries are there currently two microbreweries here in town. They're specifically in the downtown. It's Uptown Brewing and Pitt Street Brewing. Both of these entities have expressed an interest in serving mixed beverages. So, under state law, they can serve mixed beverages. But under Greenville's regulations, we only allow them to serve here and not... And so, the, the main point of, of this discussion is if council would like to allow microbreweries to serve mixed beverages. We do not have any size limits for microbreweries, but we do have a standard. And that is, the standard is for their equipment size. And that means they must have brewing equipment on site. They must make beer. It has to be at least a minimum of thirty percent of their floor area, no more than five percent. And essentially, that just goes back to when microbreweries were first introduced. It was looked at as a way to put these uses in the large buildings that were downtown. So, the idea was, is that the brewing equipment should have a minimum. We went with thirty percent. So that it is, I guess I would say, a true use. And then, we also added a limit of five thousand square feet because some of these buildings are really large. And we didn't want, want to turn it into an actual beer manufacturer. So that's why we have those limiters. Again, microbreweries are very large because they do have to have equipment on site. Uptown Brewing is about fifty-six hundred square feet. Pitt Street Brewing is about seventy-eight hundred. And so, this just shows you the math. So, if you look at Uptown Brewing, they have fifty-six hundred square feet. And so, that gives you roughly thirty-five hundred square feet for their equipment, and about twenty-one hundred for their patron space. And that's essentially where people sit. It also includes their bathrooms and the storage area. For Pitt Street Brewing, they're about seventy-eight hundred square feet. So, their brewing equipment's about five thousand square feet, and that leaves about twenty-eight hundred square feet, again, for patron space. So, I'm gonna run through these maps. And what we've done is, right now, microbreweries do not have the residential separation, so we've added that. So, that would be your, your five hundred feet rule. We have, again, taken out all these maps. We've excluded vacant parcels. We have excluded structures that could be subdivided to meet the five hundred. We're just trying to give you a, a rough idea of the number of... I'm, I'm just gonna call it opportunities. But we did delete city, county, state, and ECU properties off of these maps. This is just a quick summary. So, for right now, map one is showing you that currently, under city regulations, there's about almost sixteen hundred parcels. That would, that could be a microbrewery, but that's under today's standards. If we wanted to add size limitations, then maps two, three, four, and five do that. It shows you the size that it goes to. So, map two goes up to five thousand. Map three goes up to six thousand. We've shown you what those parcels add. This is the same format we gave you before with the bars. So that if, in that upper right-hand corner, you have the table that shows you how many properties you're adding. And so, right now, you're looking at about sixteen hundred. Up to, and I'm sorry, I can't see, up to five thousand. You're at two hundred and sixty-two. If you move it up to six thousand, you're adding an additional twenty-nine. If you move up to seven thousand, you're adding an additional sixteen. And if you go to eight thousand, you're adding an additional nineteen, for basically a total of three hundred and twenty-six. We have stopped at eight thousand because if you do want to change the standards, that's not going to negatively, negatively impact the two existing microbrewery uses that you have. So, the questions that council needs to consider, would you like to allow microbreweries to be able to have a mixed beverage permit? Would you like to add a maximum size? Because there is not a maximum size. I think this might be an easier one to answer, which is, do you want to add the separation distances from residential properties? And then, another thing that we, um, we're going to roll into this is to include the same safety and nuisance violations that the bar 2022 has, and add that to the microbrewery use. This is staff recommendation. That's all it is. It is a recommendation. Again, we said eight thousand square feet to not negatively impact the existing ones. This, again, would allow essentially around the same scale as what you currently have in the existing ones. Here's the other thing, just to take it a step further. If you do add the mixed beverage permit option, the existing microbreweries would have to get a new special use permit because they are, in fact, different than the permit that they currently live under. And then, I can stop here if you want questions. This just leads into the bar 2022. So, I, I'll be happy to answer any questions on the microbreweries.
Should we have these two different discussions?
Yeah, let's, let's talk about this right now.
Okay, then I'll just jump in. You know, looking at this, and we've had some conversations about this. What is preventing us from saying our, our microbreweries downtown can serve mixed drinks and just leave it there? That way, we don't have to look at all throughout our, our city. We've already kind of discussed that microbreweries are unlikely to locate outside of our downtown area. And because Uptown and Pitt Street are the ones that, that are seeking to do this. So, can we just say that microbreweries downtown can serve mixed drinks in discussion? Seems like that would be a kind of a real, simple way to address this issue.
How do you answer that?
I would say, I would say, as, as Mr. Regard likes to tell you, send the bosom of the council to decide that. However, it could be, it could be as easy as that, right? And it could be just allowing the ability to have mixed beverage. The only real, um, things I would say about that is most technically, someone could come forward with a twelve thousand square foot microbrewery. If you do the math, that would leave seven thousand square feet of patron space. Now, that is bigger than most of the bars we even have. So, that would be the only real, um, scale, right? To re, to consider, if, if the only thing you were thinking of is the mixed beverage permit piece.
Do we have a limit of a maximum already for microbreweries?
No, we have no size limit.
And so, but if we still, if we limited this to downtown, so like, somebody might find a warehouse of ten thousand square feet and say, I wanna do a microbrewery here. I thought, I thought there was a limit to keep it from being a manufacturing.
Well, that's the brewing equipment measure. That's the throttle for the, the scale. Is that the brewing equipment can't be more than five thousand square feet. Also, microbreweries are already allowed in other districts other than downtown. So, we would, we would have to split that if the thought was mixed beverage permits for only those downtowns.
Well, and nobody, we don't have a crystal ball, but it seems unlikely. I was reading just today what you all have already talked about, which is that microbreweries are becoming less popular. Maybe the novelty is worn off. They're still great. We love them in our community. But maybe they, there is not a taste for opening a microbrewery, you know, on Fire Tower Road, for instance. And, and, 'cause I think what's happening here is that these two breweries are, are the ones that, that we are interested in and that are, are germane to our conversation. So, you know, I'm inclined to say, let's just, let's just use Occam's razor and, and take a, um, kind of the, the most, kind of simple solution to, to that issue for them. I don't know. What do you all think?
Anybody else?
They're allowed city right, wide right now, right?
That's right. There are five, five districts.
I would say the easiest thing to do is allow them all to have the right to, to ask for a permit, which would need another, um, trip to the board of adjustments. Which is great. It also comes along with all the safety guardrails that the bar 2022 guidelines include. And including the five hundred foot separation, I think is a very good idea. I think these businesses are great. They occupy space that would not otherwise be used, which is wonderful. And puts those properties back in the tax rolls. I think that's a really great use of those spaces. They are looking for ways to increase their revenue and to diversify their revenue streams. So, I think it's good for us to allow for a way for them to do that. You know, there's a lot of varying opinion about liquor, uh, 'cause it can be dangerous if people overconsume. But it is a way that restaurants and breweries and other types of businesses increase their revenue so they can make ends meet. So, and we're also, I believe, beginning to be creative in our thinking about moving out of downtown. I love downtown. I wanna keep focusing on it myself. But we also need to start providing other types of entertainment throughout the city that's gonna serve people as we continue to grow. Because I, I don't see us stopping anytime soon. So, I think it's, it's a good opportunity for us to provide other types of entertainment throughout the city.
So, I understand what you're saying. This is, I understand. We're just talking about microbreweries. And you wanna see us have microbreweries able to serve mixed beverages throughout the city.
Correct.
As, as a bar 2022, is that what you're supporting?
With the bars 22 requirements.
With the bars 22 requirements, yes. They're separate.
With size restrictions, which is what the staff has recommended. That's right. That's what staff recommended. That's right.
And I don't see a huge difference between the types of beers that are sold these days versus a mixed beverage. Uh, it's not just a two percent, four percent beer nowadays. It's, it can be ten, twelve percent and more. So, you know...
And I also said to council, in various ones of you, that I think we need to be careful that we're just not trying to make an amendment toward ordinance just to benefit two, two businesses.
Agreed. Right.
That is crazy, that we would be, maybe just to appease two businesses. If you're gonna do this, you need to do this on a blanket respect.
Well, before we look at microbreweries citywide, we need to look, then go back and discuss if we're gonna extend bar 2022 citywide.
Yes, we will. But they're already allowed citywide. We're just sort of firming up some of the rules around them and allowing them to provide mixed beverage at their locations with the special use permit.
So, you're saying that you support taking that citywide for microbreweries? And of course, the next conversation we're gonna have is, do we wanna take bar 2022 citywide? Because we haven't really had that conversation yet, or finalized that conversation.
Right. And, and just to be clear, breweries are already allowed citywide.
They are, but not breweries serving mixed drinks.
Great. Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
I just wanna make sure we're talking at the same time.
Yes, me too. Thank you.
So, the staff just has a couple more slides on the bar 2022. Won't take us long to go through that and complete that conversation.
Were you suggesting the size? Did you have size suggestions?
Yes, I would agree with staff and recommend that we say yes to mixed beverage, cap it at eight thousand square feet, five hundred foot separations, and yes to, to the last recommendation, whatever that was.
So, you liked my slide. Is that what I'm hearing?
Slide was outstanding.
Big fan of your slide. Could've written it.
All right, we're good.
All right. And then, um, the last thing, this has to do with bar 2022, and I, I know we've ran over that quite a lot. Really, I boiled it down to two questions, which is, do you want to increase the maximum size? Currently, it's two thousand square feet. And then, the other piece is, do you want to allow it outside downtown? Because it is only allowed right here in the downtown area. I'm not gonna run, I, I'll, I'll just say very simply, um, I, I'm gonna go ahead and tell you what staff's gonna recommend. It's just a recommendation. We are recommending to go up to thirty-five hundred square feet. So, if you look at line two, that tells you that at thirty-five hundred square feet, that would be sixty-nine locations downtown, sixty-eight citywide, for a hundred and thirty-seven. And if you add in what's currently, that brings you up to two thirty-four. Okay, so that would be two hundred and thirty-four opportunities. And so, again, uh, increasing to three, to thirty-five hundred. And then, also allowing it downtown. Again, this is something we currently don't allow. So, this would allow this to be downtown. It may reduce, um, the concentration downtown, and it just gives other people a way to have the same use in other places as the city. And that's...
Any questions, comments, direction?
Question. So, Chief, if we do this throughout the city, do you foresee a, um, need for an increased police protection with the bars? And what effect will that have on the police department?
I'll always say yes. We need more police action.
Okay.
We, we could, I believe we could have it.
That, that was my question.
Oh, you don't have...
Yeah.
I have a comment, and it's not gonna surprise anybody. I, I, I think that we've seen, um, some success, some early success with bar 2022. We've got Agave, which has opened up. It looks really nice. Elevated cocktail experience. We've got two more that are coming. We have, you know, a set of guidelines that have a lot of promise for our community. I say, why do we want to change a lot about them at one time? I suggest that we indeed do allow it outside of the downtown area, but that we keep that maximum size in place. Because, first of all, for these three new businesses that are opening up, they haven't even had a chance to open up, and we're already changing the ordinance. And, you know, I, I feel like we should see how this works citywide at the same maximum size. And then, after we extend it citywide, then we can go back and say, you know what? We feel like it need, we need to have larger, we need to allow larger establishments. And make that decision on its own, rather than trying to just say, we're gonna change a whole lot of things about it. Let's just try changing one thing at the time. Because, again, this is coming after many years of the five hundred foot separation, so it is a big change for our community. So, I, I suggest caution in taking it slowly and being deliberate and intentional about how we initiate bar 2022 citywide.
But would, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be required to start at the maximum size. They just have the ability to do it if they want to.
It just opens up more potential properties, and it opens up, um, more likelihood that these would be larger establishments. We have, again, I haven't been in there yet, but I've seen the pictures and their website. Agave looks just like a really nice establishment. And I think we have set up some guidelines that are gonna cultivate nice establishments where people can have that cocktail. I think they said they're gonna be open during the day. If you wanna come, you got a business meeting, you wanna happen there. In other words, it seems like this policy is, is doing what we want it to do, which is to, to encourage, um, uh, drinking establishments that are community-based and that are, again, to use Agave's terms, elevated. And it concerns me if we, you know, immediately start making more properties available without giving a chance for this two hundred square foot limit to be in place citywide. Let's see what that does. Let's see what the interest is. And then, we say, hey, you know what? We need to open up more properties. I think we have the opportunity to have a lot of properties and a lot of good businesses with that two hundred square foot, two thousand square foot count.
Michael, can you tell me the maximum number of people that Agave is supposed to have in their bar at any one point in time?
I think it's like twenty-five, I mean, thirty, forty.
It's, I think it's forty, yeah.
Oh, I was, well, no, forty.
I appreciate everything you're saying. And I still believe that two thousand square feet is small. And I believe that they are opening all day 'cause they're worried about their revenue.
'Cause you said you're like twenty...
I, my building is twenty-eight hundred square feet, and it's pretty small, um, for what we're doing. So, I, I can't imagine running a business any smaller, my business in particular, with any smaller building than I have now. So, I, and I'm, I stand corrected. We do have one open now. I haven't had a chance to get by there, but it is very beautiful, um, and they are gonna take, take a crack at it. And they've been very successful in their ways, so I'm hopeful. But I'm still not a hundred percent sure that it's gonna be big enough for them to make money. They have other sources of income and businesses surround it, so I'm not too worried about them. But generally speaking, I still believe two thousand is small.
Matt, do you think, do you think thirty-five hundred is enough?
Yes. I, no, I, I think, I think thirty-five hundred is a good, um, place to start. 'Cause it keeps it manageable, um, and smallish. And again, just allows other types of establishments to open up around the city, too. We're not just talking about seedy bars. I mean, I, I'm thinking about neighborhood bars, where you could go and have a, a, you know, drink with a friend, play some pool. I'm talking about like a Dave and Buster's type situation, where you play arcade games, and they'd be allowed to sell liquor to, um, expand their revenue stream and business like that. Or like the, the golf, um, arcade that we're gonna have going on Dickinson. And that is, is a bar, right? So, it's, it's, it's larger than two thousand square feet.
So, what is it? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Finish that. I'll finish that. At one point, we were talking about Starlight. That's a large, how big is Starlight? Do we know?
It's probably five thousand square feet.
So, that's five thousand? Do you guys know?
We took both parcels. It's at least five thousand.
What about Fifth Street Hardware? Does anybody have an idea how big that is?
That's gotta be...
It's huge. Place is huge.
So, when we're looking at thirty-five hundred square feet, what is, do we have an idea of what that looks like downtown?
Add thousands to Matt's place.
Yeah, I bet you Nash is somewhere in that range.
'Cause that's big.
My place is almost three thousand square feet.
That's big, if we're getting the size of Nash. And I think that's the goal here, essentially, is to not have large, you know, these large bars that just, you know, it creates a different kind of atmosphere at a certain, at a, at a larger size.
So, sorry, I don't understand.
That's, that's almost a preference, though, right? I mean, in our honesty.
But it creates a different atmosphere when you have a larger size. And I think that was part of, that was part of the goals of bar 22. Bar 2022, keeping it smaller, so you have a different kind of atmosphere.
I don't know if you necessarily say atmosphere. I mean, you can make a space however you want it to be. You can pack it in as tight as you want to, or you can just make an aesthetic. Look at Coastal Park. Look how big of a building that is. You're not packing people into that building. It's very well spread out. So, I think it's up to the operator. And I think the one thing that hasn't been mentioned, too, is when you open it up, you let the free market work. There's gonna be, put a lot more pressure on some of the bars that are currently there to make sure that they upgrade what they're offering and providing a better atmosphere, uh, in their bars, because there'll be more competition throughout the city. People have other options. Right now, they don't have options. They have whatever bars are existing right now to go to. And those are the only ones that they can patronize because they're the only ones that are allowed. So, I think that has to be thought about, too, is that with additional opportunities comes more competition, which also offers us, um, an opportunity to get some of the bars that may not be as nice or not as clean, to clean up, to be able to be competitive in the market. Just my opinion.
So, at thirty-five hundred square feet, is there a potential or an idea of what the occupancy could be? I know when I had my place, I didn't offer alcohol, but it was twenty-five hundred square feet, and our occupancy was one forty-four. The reason I'm asking is that we had a stage, you know...
It's based upon your service area, right?
I think Mike can answer right here.
It, we don't, we don't have that slide, but if you remember fact, when I presented, I gave you the square footage per person. We were doing calculations, five square foot for open space, seven with chairs, fifteen for tables and chairs. It's always going, it's, it's the infamous, it depends. Depends on how the structure's set up, how much storage space. And it could be a hundred people. If you squeeze, if you try to squeeze every little thing, I mean, you could have two hundred or more. I, I, it depends. So, to sit there and give you a straight answer, it can't do it without...
Just approximately what the range might be, but that's cool.
But I can tell you, again, that the occupant loads are based on the North Carolina State Building Codes. And, and the building is constructed to handle that occupancy for all the other measures.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions, discussions, anybody? Any directions for staff?
Yeah, so we have two recommendations on the table. It's like two gaps.
And I'm definitely in favor of going citywide. I, I would say, take one thing at a time, to, to move with intention, and just expand it citywide. And again, because I think the intent, I think bar 2022 has the potential to be really a good set of guidelines for our community. But I think it's important to see how they work, how they work at the, at the size that they were initially approved at, and then expand it citywide and see what happens. And if we find we need more bars, we can...
Start this conversation, I'll let you down.
We can raise, we can raise the size.
We're just gonna go back and forth. I, I just don't feel like that, that does much.
Mayor, would it, would it be easy enough just to, I mean, just to, with what we've got sitting on the table, to do a thumbs up?
Yeah, so I was just gonna, I was just gonna recommend, if we could do a thumbs up on who's in favor of going citywide with the staff's recommendation of thirty-five hundred square feet, that would be helpful.
I mean, can we vote on it separately? He's doing it separately.
Yeah, we're just doing, we're doing this one right now, thirty-five hundred citywide.
Bar 2022 first. Okay, the, the size first.
Yeah, just bar 2022, citywide and downtown, thirty-five hundred.
So, we're voting, only voting on the size right now, downtown, twenty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred downtown and citywide.
So, same everywhere. Are we voting on the citywide first?
Not technically, we're not technically voting. We're just giving a thumbs up. We're in agreement with it.
So, can you do the staff's recommendation slide?
Yeah, go back to the recommendations.
Just voting on staff. So, that's the first one, so...
So, that's the law. So, it's, everybody gets thirty-five hundred whether you're downtown or citywide.
Everybody good with that? Thumbs up? Is that for Councilmember Blackburn?
Hey, I mean, it's not necessarily that I'm against it. I just want us to proceed with caution. I'd, I'd like to see, you know, I'd just like to see what this does citywide. We've got three opening up. Why don't we give it a chance to see what, what can happen? I also want to say that I have heard Matt loudly and clearly when, when you say there is an issue of revenue. I would like, and Michael, don't pull your hair out, but I would like more information about, about how it works at two thousand square feet and what the, kind of the calculations have to be. 'Cause I want these businesses to succeed. And if two thousand square feet is gonna make it difficult for them to have the revenue that they need, I would absolutely support finances, increasing the maximum size.
So, we got four votes, or four thumbs ups, and one thumbs down.
I, I did not give a thumbs down.
Okay.
Put it down, sweetheart.
Then, I mean, if, if you don't vote, it's a yes.
Can, can I just get validation that we don't have sufficient information to make a determination if that's needed for, for, for a business to thrive?
I mean, they could do that, but just not to discount your vote, but there's enough people up here to say, let's move forward, and then we'll take this at another step where it has to go before...
It goes to, um, dancing and then back to...
Correct.
I'm gonna reluctantly go along with this, because in general, I believe that the Bar Twenty Twenty Two guidelines are good and strong, and I'm gonna take a leap of faith with my colleagues, although I am concerned about going up to that maximum size.
We just hit a home run, we just hit a home run.
There we go, now we got Michael.
All right, anybody thumbs up, thumbs down?
Microbreweries?
Yep, we go for microbreweries?
What's the maximum size of a microbrewery?
Eight thousand square feet.
Eight thousand square feet is what the recommendation is.
Citywide?
Which is just over the size of a restaurant.
So, just for fun.
I don't know if this is gonna be fun.
What about, what about the possibility that somebody buys their vats on Amazon and does it really a microbrewery and just wants to have a big old bar? At eight thousand square feet. We, we as staff, we would do an inspection as part of it being built. I mean, the building inspectors would be looking for brewing equipment, we as staff would be looking for brewing equipment. Can they do it on the small side, certainly they could do it on the small side, but they actually think that could be a microbrewery, functioning microbrewery, I need to see there.
And they still have to meet the percentages, right? Equipment to.
I think that's fair to say that the, the maximum percentage of eight thou, uh, maximum of eight thousand is actually the minimum. I hate to go back to that and what we've talked about, but it's actually the minimum that would allow those two existings to follow.
All right, so thumbs up, thumbs down?
There is no, there are no thumbs down?
So we're good? All right, we're set.
We're done? I'm gonna get her to her slides, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Gooby, as always.
You are welcome, there you go.
All right, thank you, Mayor, item number two, update on the Unified Development Ordinance, UDO process. I'll now call for our Director of Plan Development, Ms. Eric, for the production.
All right, uh, many times we've talked about this three-letter entity, UDO, Unified Development Ordinance. And, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and introduce Ms. Sarah Sinatra-Telius, she's no stranger, and we've come a long way. And now we are to the point, we've shared draft, um, language, and we are at the stage where we're close to providing the fund. So without further ado, Ms. Sarah.
Hi, Sarah Sinatra with Inspire Place Meetings, and thanks for having me, and thanks for being with us through all of these, um, versions that we've been working with your task force on and with the planning board, so we're really excited to be able to showcase this to you today. How we've split this up, because we do have a lot to go over, is explaining the purpose, um, goals and objectives of the projects, and milestones, um, talking about the, uh, public engagement, um, and then the major changes and next steps. So we've, um, worked with the community, we worked with staff to craft the city's actual first Unified Development Ordinance. Um, I'll quickly go through some of the public engagement, cause that was really critical, um, as part of this process. And the purpose, um, was to update and modernize ordinances. When we talk about Unified Development Ordinance, um, it means that we're basically taking a number of different ordinances. In this case, it's subdivision, um, zoning and conditional zoning, I'll talk about that in a moment too, because that's a new component. Lighting signs, development review, vegetation and buffer. Um, we've combined chapters, uh, four and five, which were the zoning and subdivision, into that single comprehensive ordinance. And part of it was for alignment with the Horizon's comprehensive plan. We did a full matrix where we identified what was in the comprehensive plan that needed to be codified into an ordinance. The overall intention is to be easier for the reader, um, for staff to interpret, and not to have, um, a lot more interpretation type questions in gray areas. We set up goals, which were really having authentic public involvement. Um, we talked about it many times, that we had seven open houses and many other types of opportunities for engagement. And it was to make sure that the public felt that there was accessible means of engagement. Um, we worked on making sure this was a transparent process. All the data and information that was provided, we kept up online with the website. And to really have a predictable ordinance, to make sure that it's user-friendly, that it has graphics where appropriate, such as in like the definition section, so people can understand what we're talking about when we're saying, you know, this is a setback, or this is how you measure your lot. So those type of things, we just tried to make as, as graphically enhanced as possible. I'm sorry, this is a little hard to see, um, but, cause we just had so many events and we tried to kind of memorialize that um, in, in one place. Um, we kicked this project off in April of two thousand twenty four. We had our first, um, task force meeting, um, in this room on, uh, May twenty ninth. Um, and then there were a number of city events. So when the city already has, um, a set event, um, such as Juneteenth, and there was a number of other events. Um, I think, uh, one was, um, the back to school kickoff, things like that. It's a great opportunity, because people are already there, and they're not there to go sit in a room like this and hear about a development ordinance, which I know I get really excited about, but generally people don't. And so you're able to capture an audience that you typically wouldn't. So we really love doing those, and so it was really fantastic that the staff was able to go out and give people surveys, pay for copies of the surveys, rather than always just the online version. So we gave a lot of platforms, um, for people to engage. We had seven open houses, um, in, in, um, in the month of August and a few in early September. We wanted to have them kind of crammed all together, so people were getting the same information. Um, they were at different places with, throughout the city, so people could go to where they felt most comfortable or, you know, made sense for them geographically. Um, engaged a lot of feedback that way. We exposed them to the website, we answered questions. Um, we also had another task force meeting in July, um, and then there was another one on November sixth. We had a follow-up task meeting in, uh, February. And in these meetings, we went through with the, uh, with the task force about changes we were making. We floated ideas by them and so forth. We had another meeting on the April sixteenth, and then a final meeting August seventh, where we gave them the code and asked them to give us feedback. Any final comments were due September tenth. Again, just to, to give summary, it was the task force, open houses, website, and all of those city-sponsored events that we mentioned, which I believe were five additional city-sponsored events and seven open houses. Um, just to give you a quick overview of the task force, uh, they're a group of professionals and citizens, um, working with staff, um, really to go over the ordinance, its processes, its shortcomings. Um, give us in, um, a perspective on Greenville's future, on the community, um, and to act as ambassadors for the project. We consistently said, we know that you all have your own groups, or Facebook, or whoever your networks are. Let people know about the project, let them know how to interact with us, so we're getting real authentic feedback. You know, when we have people that are engaged in the project, that's typically how we get, um, the best traction and get the word out. So that was, it's really helpful that it was a large group like that. Uh, we've had, this is just a listing of all the local stakeholders, community, um, advisory board representatives, um, and then, um, city staff. So it was a, a healthy group of people that gave us really great feedback, so we're really grateful for that. I went over, um, these meetings, you know, timeline as well. Um, I think you're all probably familiar, um, with the website we had. We also made sure that it was, um, an option in both English and Spanish, a very easy swap, um, on the website, so that it could be accept, accessed in different languages as well. Had, um, survey questions and different activities, um, and we had visioning activities as well. All of this information, I know I'm brushing through this fast, um, cause there's a lot of it, but all that information is memorialized on the website, we're able to pull it all down and give you those actual analytics, so it becomes part of the overall document. And everything we need to do is needs to be public facing, so we make sure you have that, all the comments, all the information. Um, I think you all are aware of the, the, the open houses that we held, um, and the activities that we did, as well as the, um, the information that we provided. Um, we had, uh, for the attendees, we had, um, a hundred and two attendees at the open houses that we had. We had, um, over five hundred surveys that were collected, this was a mix between online and paper. That just showed us that the paper versions were really critical, um, and not just relying on the website, but having that, uh, available. So we do have a summary of public engagement that we've put together, but just to go over some of the overall, um, common themes. Uh, residents emphasize the importance of pedestrians, cyclists and transit users throughout Greenville. Um, affordable housing throughout Greenville, not only for existing residents, but for young families and professionals that wanna remain in the area. Um, we talked about accessory dwelling units, and we're gonna talk about that in a moment. Um, and, um, lack of essential services north of the Tar River. Um, attendees also showed concern about environmental impacts, um, and, uh, forest density, trees. So we'll talk about what we proposed and some of the changes that came out of this. I mentioned the project milestones in the, um, on the slide that had the graphic. Um, this just kind of lays them out, which is a little easier to read than, than the graphic that we had, the timeline. Um, and so what I'll do briefly is to go through each one of the chapters or the articles that describes the major changes. Um, like I was mentioning, we've added graphics into the definition section, so that folks can understand when we're talking about buildable area, or what a street setback is, um, that they can quickly go to a graphic and be able to find a key to understand that. Development review, we re, uh, reorganized and consolidated policies, um, updated procedures, uh, just made it, uh, easier to, to be able to flow that and understand it. The major changes in zoning, um, we made some, uh, we collapsed some districts that were not used. Um, we also allowed accessory dwelling units, cottage courts and tiny homes, and tiny homes communities. So I'll, I wanna just dive into those a little bit more, because those are more significant changes as lo, uh, along with conditional zoning. I know you, yes, ma'am?
And before you even go, what is the dimensional, the pri, dimensional standards, what does that mean?
Um, it's, we actually took the table, dimensional standards are, are basically the setbacks. So the numbers, um, we actually just, a lot of times when you read a zoning, um, code, they're written all out, and to not have things in tables makes it a little clunky and hard to understand. So it's not that we actually physically made a lot of those changes, we just made them more usable and readable.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Um, I know y'all have heard a lot about conditional zoning, um, and so it is a rezoning process that specifies individual development conditioner, conditions. Landowners must agree to the conditions, and then it's approved by city council. It's a way for the landowners to utilize their property while incorporating neighbor, neighbor feedback. Um, it's not that conditions are added during the public hearing process. Basically what this means is that if someone chooses to do a conditional rezoning to their property, they'll be able to say, I'd like to be in X zoning district, um, and I'm only going to be, even though that district may have a host of uses, they want to be, they wanna have an option for maybe three or four of those uses. They meet with the neighbors, they meet with the community, and they basically determine, well, like a larger buffer, and then we'll, you know, this'll, this'll be palatable if yours only those uses. So it gives a lot more definitive, um, response to both the community, um, and for the council when you're making a decision, um, what that property will ultimately be, rather than just going in blind and saying, you know, it's a rezoning, we don't know until we finally get it rezoned, and then someone could say they're doing a project. Um, but this really ties it in, so it ties into the, um, the approval. So we flowed, did a flow chart of the process, because this is new, so we wanted everybody to kind of be aware that you go through a pre-application meeting with staff, and then there's a structured neighborhood meeting to discuss the project. That's really important, that's a new feature. There's, um, signatures from landowners in the district on the conditions, and then the council approves through the legislative decision. Um, and then there would be a, um, a zoning map amendment. So there's a lot of predictability, that's really been our tone through the ordinance, and this is a new feature of a rezoning op, opportunity. This doesn't mean that all rezonings in the future would be conditional. It's another tool in your toolkit that someone can offer to say that they'd like to come in for a conditional, because there's going to be, they, they know specifically what they'd like to potentially do with that property.
Do you have more questions for me?
Um, a little more on the conditional zoning, um, it, um, again, for the uses, it'll be limited. Uh, you'll have, you can include, um, conditions about your setbacks, your height, your density. These are all things that are opportunities to have conditions on, site features. There might be an opportunity to say they'd like a lar, like the residents after they meet, they have their, their neighborhood meeting. They'd like an opportunity for a larger, um, uh, buffer, which may be something that would be discussed and agreed upon. Maybe it's hours of operation, um, those are things that could be agreed upon. Um, but the city cannot include requirements, um, that, they cannot include requirements a city that otherwise doesn't have authority to regulate. So, next major change are tiny home standards. There are two different components, you have the tiny home community and tiny home standards. We'll talk about tiny home community in a moment. Tiny home standards are really for substandard lots. When we started to go through this process, we found that there were a number of existing platted lots. These are for existing properties that happen to be substandard, meaning that they don't meet the size required today to put in a home. So that means that they basically do not develop unless they come in with multiple, multiple variances and are still hard to develop, um, or they have to aggregate with a, with a, a neighboring property. In this case, we've said, you know, we recognize that there are some of these existing lots, um, that could potentially house a tiny home, um, but we have to craft appropriate standards. And the intention is, you know, this is, this is potentially an affordable housing option, because this means that somebody does not have to go through a, a lengthy variance process to, to, to demonstrate hardship, even though we understand that these are existing lots. So here's an option that we're looking at that could be an easy fix to develop some of those parcels. So we've reduced in these standards, um, to make sure that someone could, based on the, the, those property, the property sizes, um, be able to develop. Now, this is, you cannot subdivide, you cannot create new lots within an existing neighborhood to develop this. If you want to do that, there's another option that we've prepared, which is, um, tiny home communities. So in the tiny home community, you must have a minimum of ten lots. They, the intent is, is again, to provide affordable housing. Um, the goal is, um, that the units need to have like shared amenities. Um, you come in for a subdivision plan, so it'd be a subdivision plan with the tiny homes, um, with up to, you know, a minimum of ten of these units could be developed. And again, the goal is that this would be, um, an affordable option. Um, we would, looking at, um, minimum open space, so the idea is that these would be shared. So we're not talking about each one of these units having to have those carrying costs that you typically have, um, when you're talking about, uh, single lot development. So there's an opportunity to pro, provide this, um, and having that shared courtyard. Cottage court is another option, another, um, uh, product that we're including and adding to the code. What this is, is that you can have a minimum number of three of these units. This, these images are kind of a good picture of what that looks like, where there's a shared, um, green space. So the intent is to have, um, not, they have, these are, these are typically smaller units, but it's on the smaller lots, so that they share their green space, they have shared amenities. Um, and it would be developed, um, with the goal of having, you know, a lot of times these are used for potentially for senior living, or just different variety of, of housing styles, um, that don't require this big yard and so forth. So it's just giving another option for potential, um, of, uh, affordable option. Accessory dwelling unit is another feature that we've included. There was a lot of discussion at the task force level about the, um, accessory dwelling units and where this would be appropriate to be, um, included. And we've included it as a, um, special use in the R A twenty, R fifteen S, um, R nine S, R nine and M R S districts. Um, they are not, uh, included in the, the smallest lot districts, simply because of the requirements, um, that are needed in order to, to make one of these, um, properties work. Um, we have certain setback requirements, it has to meet the setbacks of the underlying district. Um, you need to provide, uh, an off-street parking space. Um, and it only can be on conforming single lot, single family lot. So there are some additional restrictions, um, but at least it gives an option for people to be able to place an, um, an A D U now on top of these. Some other, um, changes we made, uh, include distance separation for tobacco and hemp retail. There'd be a five hundred foot distance separation, um, for multiple uses, and then a sep, distance separation from each other. So this is new. Um, we've also included, um, requirements about no rope lighting. Um, we're, we're mentioning this in this context, but it's really for all businesses, it's not the. It's not the rope lighting that you have around the windows that flashes or moves or illuminates in general to really attract and really function like a sign. So we've included prohibition with a one-year amortization. So if someone has that lighting now, once the code is adopted, they have one year to remove that. We introduced buffer yard materials for buffer yard B that had been not included in the code previously, so we included that. Also, additional opacity standards, you have a thicker buffer, functions more like a wall in a way, but it's green. We've included increasing native species requirement to 50%. Street trees, this was increased from two to three for every 100, 100 linear feet. And added requirements on single-family and two-family lots. So, a couple other features, this was all due to the task force's work and feedback to us. The ability to substitute trees for shrubs has been removed. Incorporating the protection standards for trees from public works has also been included, were some of the appropriate standards that relate to planning. We've developed graphics for the buffer yards so that people can follow along and understand what that means. And increased incentives for the preservation of trees. I know this is challenging to see, it's on this, on this scale, but we've included the buffers kind of in a table, and then we've also demonstrated a graphic with key, like a legend that tells small tree, large tree, and kind of what that'll eventually look like. We've also created credits for preserving existing trees. So if you had large trees previously, you would get a credit for one. Now we're offering two, there's, you can see there's an equivalency. The intent is to really encourage people to preserve what's there. You know, it takes a lot longer for a tree to grow, so we'd rather have the existing trees and get more credits as an option. Also, single-family and two-family, we now have a requirement that up to a half an acre, it's one large tree or two small. You can see the breakdown here. These are all new requirements that were previously not provided. In parking, we basically just modernized some of the requirements. You'll see that throughout the ordinance, it was just a modernization. In Article 7 subdivision in site design, we added a fee and loop provision for sidewalks. Also, for recreation areas, that allows a developer to pay into the fund of a future park, rather than having maybe a potentially small park in a pocket of an area of their neighborhood. Instead, there's going to be a potential fund for recreation. And then simple things like adding seminal requirements to be digital. On signage, the major change is to make sure that we are federally and state compliant. So we made sure that that is all compliant and had lighting standards. Also, we just created some simple graphics so people understood what the signs were and how to calculate them, because that often becomes challenging. We've developed standards for non-conforming reductions. As want to point out, in the current state law, and everybody knows about non-conformity, that's been a big topic. We've added some initial language in the beginning of our general provision section that addresses that as well. So, final draft would be to planning and zoning on April, I'm sorry, on October 21st. And then you would all potentially hear this on November 13th. I know I had a lot of info, so try to go through that.
No questions, okay.
I just have one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
With the idea of the conditional zoning, if all other rules apply, our future land use plan and everything else is in place, it just provides an opportunity for different conversations?
The other thing I want to say is, I thank you. I know this has been a long process, and then looking at the timeline of how long this has gone on. But I think it's, I think it's great because, you know, I mean, things have changed over the years. I mean, talking about tiny homes, you know, I don't think anybody probably 15 years ago thought that would be a necessity, but like, as prices of housing and prices continue to rise, it becomes less and less affordable, and we want people to live in our community and different opportunities for them to live, I think is great. So appreciate the hard work that you've done, appreciate our staff, all the citizens, and the people from the private sector that have devoted a bunch of time to developing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll also note that this has been, our process is involved with lost back time and community time, but remember, this is just the first step, the UDO's first step. As soon as we get through with this, we move right into the update of the 10-year long-range plan. So that's what we'll be working on all of next year, be able to prepare bringing that back. A lot of community engagement that we just completed, but a lot of more community engagement that will be undertaken in very.
I just want to elevate that when we talk about tiny homes and affordable housing, that tiny homes are affordable housing for one or two people. But when we look at where affordable housing is and where homelessness is, and the fact that the face of homelessness in our community has shifted to include working-class families with children, that that is not an affordable option for families. Keeping that in perspective, that the face of homelessness has changed. And while we do need that, we need to be mindful of the fact that that is for a minimum number of people.
Well, I would say too, though, I think the good thing about that is it offers another housing option. So somebody that might be a three-bedroom apartment, it might be more conducive for a family. If they find a tiny home that they can go into, it would open up a three-bedroom for a family to potentially get in there, so.
And not only, I just.
Yeah, I totally understand what you're saying. I think, I think it's a good thing, just having different options and giving different places for people to be able to locate and call home.
All right, we got a closed session?
Yes, Mr. Attorney. Mayor, mayor and council members, I recommend that council adopt the following motion, holding a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Section 143-318.11A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, including consultation relating to the following lawsuit entitled City of Greenville Pleniff versus Camping World Property LLC, formerly known as Camping World Property Incorporated, defendant. And the second round for closed session is pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11 to instruct the public body staff from negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price of a contract and proposed contract for the acquisition of real property or properties by purchase, option, exchange, or lease.
Second.
All right, motion made by Councilmember Scully, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, say nay. We are officially in.